Thank you. Welcome back to the morning committee meeting of the House Appropriations Committee. Today is Friday, the 11th of February. We're about to go into our second debrief of the public hearing session. We like to go through all of the information that has been, that has been, we either received in person or that we received through written testimony. And several of us, I know that I have, I cannot speak for everyone, but I know that everyone has been looking at the, at the written testimony. I've gone through all of it myself. And definitely some consistent themes are, are coming to the forefront. So this is a kind of freewheeling a little bit, but that's the way it is. So I'll start off again and then everyone can follow along. You know, I continue to hear and continue to read about the, about childcare and the issues there, and that's certainly a big thing. Another one that I, that I just wanted to bring up was the DAs and SSAs and the rate increase. What's going on there? And they're just, they are, I'm not going to use the word crisis, but it's close. It certainly is close. So that's certainly some things that we're going to have to look at going forward. So again, we can go around the table a few times. Maida?
Okay. I was struck, not surprised by the liberation of the kinds of needs which were spoken to in our first public hearing.
Yes.
About childcare, how it changed that a few people brought their attention to the background with the natural resources conservation district.
Yeah.
As they relate to, I have my notes correct here, that related to BHCB also. But I was glad to have this new piece, and it underscores again, BHCB does good work not only regarding housing components, but also regarding conservation of our forest land and our farms alike.
That's very, very true. Thank you. Good point. Marty?
Well, I would just clarify, yes, that one struck me as well, because there were two or three that had been involved in that in the past. This group has come to meetings because I had natural resources and asked about it. The current funding for them from us related to BHCB, but as I understand it, the current funding for them goes to the agency of agriculture.
Uh huh.
And it's a fairly small amount then. And they do get ARPA funding, but they would like more state funding. One that, I mean, we had the continuation of talking about the access TV, that was, and several others. And there were several that were talking about the adult ed and literacy needing more funds.
Regarding the adult ed, I know we haven't, who's got that budget? Does anyone?
I think it's me.
Okay. I just, how long has it been since we've done anything to assist that?
I think they said-
Level funded forever?
For 14 years, or 2014, or something. A very long time that we've underfunded them. And, and the population they serve is a pretty needy population that could be very productive if they get what they-
They are focused-
I've met some of the graduates from the program over the years and-
There are folks that have decided they're going to do something.
Yes.
And we need to help them do something.
Exactly.
And I think the critical thing on that is that they have not that group. There, there's four groups and they, you know, divide the money among them. They did not receive any ARPA funds or any SRA funds.
Right.
There was some year funds, and I'm not exactly sure how that worked.
I'm sure they did.
Still, it was not a substantial amount to really help them.
Right.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, the PEC TV, I guess more of a question. During the BAA, we added in $300,000, I believe. I don't know if that stayed in the Senate or not. And then I, I know on that proposal, it was 600 this year, but I thought we were going to ask another committee to look at the long-term funding issue, and I don't know if that's happening or not. Was it, because the numbers they gave us kind of escalated every year.
Right. They had a request for-
Yeah. But there's two different organizations that are attempting to, to fix funding, well, at least two different organizations. Obviously, the Center for Crime Victim Services attempting to fix that, but so is this group. And I believe that, that they are trying to get to a point where they can apply for, or perhaps they've already applied for new grant funding. But because it's in line with the federal fiscal year, it doesn't start until October. And so they need to get through July, August, and September, hence the $600,000.
That's different.
Yeah, no, but that's, next year they were asking for even more.
That's a different group.
Yes, Van, I've got the information for Van right here.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, Trevor?
But well, as, as just a follow-up to that conversation, I remember hearing that it's been part of that conversation that the Committee of Jurisdiction oversee this and actually said to them, we need to look at that, but in the meantime, go to approach this and, and look for the bridge funding until-
That's right.
I don't know what those committees are, quite frankly. Probably Energy and Technology.
Energy and Technology.
That's right, that's right.
But that's, I, I remember hearing that in a couple different places.
Right.
They were sent to us.
Yeah, no, and, and that, but was that for the BAA or was it for both?
Both.
Both, okay.
No, in the beginning, the very-
And I'm, I'm fine, but if it's just going to build, I mean, we've increased the base funding, so is that the solution we want? Or is there another funding mechanism that Energy and Technology is going to come up with that's sustainable? And that's just the question. I mean, I agree with, I mean, there's obviously a lot of good needs out there. I would be curious, and maybe it's just me, everybody has a different perspective at looking at these. But it would be, I'm not saying I agree with the administration's choices down the line, but they obviously said no on a lot of these, and they put whatever finite amount of money elsewhere. It would be interesting to let them explain why, you know, they didn't build in PEC TV or why they didn't build in Adult Learning. Obviously, because it took money from elsewhere or, or other, more of a priority to them. I just, I appreciate hearing the different perspectives.
Sure, sure. Yes, Maida?
If I could, just, I, I understand what you're saying, Jim, but with regard to the PEC TV in particular.
Yeah.
My understanding is following up with what Trevor said, is that they used, they used the approach to ask for the $300,000 in BAA and $600,000 in FY23, because that is what the Committee of Policy and Jurisdiction said they should do. It wasn't a matter of, well, why don't you go ask the administration? That's why, I think that that's a piece of why it doesn't perhaps show up in the governor's recommended budget.
Yeah. No, I, I appreciate that. And I don't want to see that network fail because of, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars. I'm just asking, I mean, did they ask the administration to be put in part of the base budget because of the shortfall?
That'd be a question we could ask them.
Yeah.
We need to ask out on some of these.
Yeah. But, but the reason they're going down is because they've been getting their money from cable.
Right.
And so I sent you all the little chart that shows-
Yep, saw that. Thank you. I remember that. Now, we're all streaming, so the cable revenue is declining, and that's where they were funded.
This is the reason when I bite my, grit my teeth and pay my Comcast bill every year, I'm doing it because I'm supporting middle-aged community television.
And as a follow-up too, remember, I think it was last year, wasn't it? That we, last year, a year or four, somewhere, we put in a little bit of funding for a study to be done. And this is all coming, it's all-
The study is, that's, that's from the study?
Yes, it's all related.
I thought I had the entire study, but I'm not seeing it.
I've got it. I can send it to you, Robin, if you want it.
Sure.
Robin, what struck you, other than the access network?
Well, obviously, adult, adult learning also, because I think it's really, really And always BHCB, as people have said, and also the downtowns. I think, I think that really, that really struck me. Actually, there was one piece of testimony that I read yesterday that was not like all the other testimony that we've done. Kind of, it's the second one from the top, I'll have to come back to you.
I'll let you find it, and we'll, we'll come back.
Oh, I think it was about the state colleges and scholarships and money and thinking about it this way, but I think supporting the state colleges is a pretty important piece as well. But what I liked was the way the person talked about it and was very thoughtful in the way they suggested us thinking about it. So I will find that and get back to you.
One of the things about the state colleges, you have a lot of folks that will access an opportunity because it's fairly close. They are not spending funds to, to house themselves or to feed themselves because they're staying at home to do that. And should something happen to some of the state college campuses, the likelihood of those folks driving or, or going into a different facility is questionable. You know, it doesn't mean they won't, but you cannot absolutely say they will. And, and we could, you know, it may impact Vermonters' desires to improve themselves. So the Vermont State College requests are very keen on my mind and-
Well, this was actually from the McClure Foundation.
Oh, yes.
So I did find it. And it was about, it was about really having a strategic direction and goal and lowering tuition for college-bound students. And, but they said, we failed to see the strategic objective of driving the institutional obligation of that 15 million. It was 10 million to UVM and 5 million to the state colleges. And they, they think that they see the greatest difference as making 10 million to community colleges, the lower tuition there to get people into the system. So is it, it's worth reading this two-page memo from them relatively-
As soon as you started talking about it, I had read it.
Yeah.
One of the things that they did not recognize in that is that we have the 802 Opportunity Scholarship at the, at the community colleges, which means anyone whose family is under $50,000 in income-
Right.
-is going there, last dollar free.
How, how much money do we have into that?
That's right now 1.9 a year.
Okay. So they're talking about a lot more than that going to the state.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. And I think that, that is really important to, to have something like that.
Was there two of the last this year?
Who's, the, the colleges? So-
The whole system.
The whole system. So realistically, it's a base of 48 million. If, if we accelerate all the base increases and then a, and then if we do that, then the, the, a bridge would be 14, seven or 14. I can't remember. I've got to look it up instead of being off the top of my-
Yeah, I had 55 in my-
That's about right. Yeah, that sounds about right. So you're asking me to remember a number instead of looking it up?
It's a number worse to remember.
I agree.
It's not a small number.
It's not a small number.
But it's a number, I gotta, I gotta tell you. Can I?
We're degree things, so please.
You were here a while, I was here a while.
Yep.
And I watched Vermont State, and Marty, I think he was here too, sure. I watched Vermont State Colleges come in prior to, is her name Sophie?
Sophie, yep.
And Jeb Spalding annually leaded with us for more dollars. We give him anywhere between 3 and 8 million or somewhere in there, closer to 5 and 4 and maybe 3. But nonetheless, when he went here, he came in, basically threw his badge on the table and said, I'm done, folks. We can't do this anymore. We're broke. And everybody was astonished. And it was our own fault. That's what worries me more about this whole thing than anything else. These are big asks here, 55 million bucks? So I have a lot of respect for Jeb Spalding. I think a lot of people were mad at him, but the guy did all he could do. He had asked us and we had refused year after year. So I, and I don't want to bore you, but I just don't want to see us start to go in that same direction, because those three ladies right there this morning are probably the most, some of the most professional people in Vermont.
I, I will say this about them. They have been extraordinary in the, in the response to all the asks that I have asked of them and that this body has asked of them. They have performed an extraordinary amount of work. I'm sorry for using the same, same term, but I really can't think of a, of another term that's that high in a very short period of time. They are transitioning those facilities from, from a, a stodgy liberal arts institution to a, a, a liberal arts slash workforce development institution that students want to go to again. And, and the thing is, a lot of college students want to go like this. And they are incorporating that. The asynchronous aspect of their, of their delivery system is, is a great idea. You know, the number of times that, that any student would like to, I wish I could re-watch or re-see that class because I missed something and I could really, you know, use the ability to look at it again. They can. So they are doing things that will help our students in the future.
They are succeeding so, as every other college, gotta believe.
Well, you can't say that, because every other college, there's a lot of colleges that are just plain closing and they-
They're still closing?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Well, that's, that's a good thing to gel that feathers out a little bit. I haven't heard that much about it. Gel that feathers out a little bit, that, that will help, that will help a lot of colleges.
Trevor, we skipped over you.
Well, I, I think there were a lot of common themes on both states. So, but the two that, and I've already spoken to here, but sort of stood out to me in the second round, you're doing this again.
Yeah, yeah. Please.
Would be the conservation districts and the adult learning. So I think those are the two themes for me that stood out in the second round of presentations that you were up to. And, and again, I, I concur with Robin about the importance of adult ed. And certainly, I've had a fair amount of experience with the conservation districts. I work in environmental stuff, so, and they do very good work, and we should try to support them in their acts.
Rob, did you have something else, or you want me to wait until the next goes?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Kimberly?
Yeah, I'm going to echo a lot of what's already been said. The conservation districts, I didn't think of it in terms of clean water goals, so that was an interesting piece. One thing I don't understand is how they work and align with what the extension agents do. So that's just one question that came across my mind. And the Vermont adult learning, I think, is really important because, as we talked about yesterday, there is an entire educational spectrum, and literacy is what you need to plug in at any point, regardless of where you choose to go. And it may be because, you know, language other than English is your personal language or any number of reasons. So that strikes me as being really important. And then the downtown program, I also think is interesting because it is different in each place, and the needs are different, and what people do and how they run with it. I, I've seen what they've done in Mount Kilian, and it's impressive. So, and I agree with many of the other points that have already been made, in particular the DAs and SSAs. And I think that's going to come up with the budget adjustment in terms of how those dollars are allocated and what's the therapy that goes.
You just said something that, that caused me to, to think regarding the adult basic ed. I wonder if they do, and I don't know what it's now called, but English as a second language teaching? You know, we, we have a population of refugees that are, that are coming into the state, and certainly there's, they're probably going to be settled in a few different locations. You don't, you want them to feel like they can go have a cup of coffee with someone that's from their home country, you know? So putting one here and one here and one here probably is not the preferred methodology.
Language learning is what it's called, ELL. It's not ESL anymore.
Anymore, okay. I was close. I included something about English and language, so, you know.
Yeah. And yes, they do that here.
They do that.
And, and yes, one of their main things is helping people study for, learn English, but study for the, the exam, the immigrant, the citizenship exam. And a lot of their students, they help them through that process. So yes, we've got immigrants who hopefully want to be citizens.
Yeah, so that's another aspect that, that we need to remember, you know, when we're going through this, so.
We are, we have chosen happily to be welcoming to people coming here from other countries and refugees, and we shouldn't be supporting that and supporting them. So this is a way to do that. It's probably the way it happens for the adults.
Maida, anything else?
There was one other thing. I can leave or not? Something getting twitchy. My eye fell on Mark Hughes, and besides urging us to create a moral budget, he, he had a specific ask, $400,000 for the Richard Kemp Center in Burlington. Anybody know what Richard, I, I know who Richard Kemp was, I knew him, but I don't have a clue as to what center it was.
Richard who?
Kemp.
K E M P.
Nobody-
No idea.
So I should just find out.
Can you find out the source? So they're going, going.
Yeah.
That was, thank you, because when I wrote it down, I was, it was one of those, what's that?
Yeah. I'll, I'll check it out.
Thank you. Marty, anything else?
I have one more, and only one person spoke about it. It's the Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually impaired. Their executive director came. And I think we're all familiar with the program. We gave them $100,000 last year and the year before from CARES funding, because it was related to isolation of these folks. They're stuck at home and were blind or almost blind, and they needed training on how to use iPhone. There are all kinds of wonderful apps available for these people to use, but they needed training on how to do that. So we gave them $100,000 for two separate years. They don't have funding on their own to be able to continue that, and this time around, they're asking for $100,000, but for it to be continuing somehow. So we would have to consider that as well. I, I think it's a very, very valuable program. And then, full disclosure to everybody, I'll tell you, my husband is chairman of the board of this team and has been for several years. And before that, he was a professional consultant at this organization. So he is very keen on their activities and what they do. And they work in conjunction with our Department of the Blind. It's just that our state agency concentrates on trying to get people into the workforce and actually give them, you know, training, help them do that. Whereas the, the VABBI does certainly do some training. They do a lot of work with children and then a lot of work with other people who are homebound. So it's a worthy effort, I think, but whether we feel comfortable in, you know, asking Dale to put $100,000 in their budget-
Is that what their ask was? That's where I was going.
I thought it was-
Trying to find my note.
Do they, do they currently have, they have a base right now?
No.
They do?
No base, no.
Okay.
It was just a grant.
Okay.
And we authorized it through one-time funds to give it to Dale, to ask them to grant it out.
Kim, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, there was some question, I mean, we talked about it earlier on the, I assume it's a Medicaid reimbursement that was built in for a 3% increase, it's like Choices for Care, and they're asking for a 10% increase. Do we know what that difference is in dollars?
Well, we can find out. I don't know if it's something yet, but-
Certainly when we get the, when we get the budget, the, 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 the bridge, the help here, the numbers, you know, the weather report, yeah, we'll be able to, we'll see what a 3% looks like and it's easy math from there.
No, I just, I mean, I, I get it if you haven't had regular ongoing increases, that 3% is maybe appreciated, but doesn't catch you up to where you need to be. But, I mean, I don't know if we're talking a million dollars or if we're talking $20 million for that difference.
It's going to be a number between the two.
Thank you.
Well, definitely. So when I heard 3%, the first, the first thing in my head was around 7 million, maybe I'm wrong, but we'll, and we'll find out.
Okay, so it would be a pretty big number.
It is a fairly big number.
Yeah. But if you do it, it's just, you know, it's making it all work.
Yeah. A lot of issues, a lot of, a lot of issues. And there have been years when, when they did not receive any type of an increase at all.
Well, and that's what I'm getting at. I think 10%, they probably figured it gets them back to where they, I'm assuming where they think they should be to retain, you know, the people or attract people to that field. And I get it. And last month, inflation was 7.5%. So hopefully that doesn't continue, but it does exacerbate the problem.
I, I know one DA who keeps losing their people to the school system because the school system pays more.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, it's very-
I know, it's a driver.
Robin?
The other one that, a couple, a few people mentioned, actually, I think in both of them, but I'm not sure I've heard us talk about, I think it's already in the governor's budget, is the money for recovery housing, for sober housing and people transitioning. And I, I think that's really important because we want people to succeed and become self-supporting. And if we don't have those recovery housing, we're going to be paying for it again and again in other ways that are much more expensive. So I can't, I don't, I'd have to go find the exact amount. I'm pretty sure it was already in the governor's budget, but I, I think that's a really important piece.
Yeah, I've got to dig into that some.
I've also got a follow-up email when I raised it from the top dog.
Maida?
That's what I was going to say also. He, he had asked specifically for just, just a recovery center focused on justice-involved individuals, which is, and in the email, he explained how it's different from other-
And, and so just to, just to, you know, just to clarify, that recovery center is kind of like a turning point where, where it is, they are for justice-involved youth. And recovery housing is, is in-residence type facility where, where people go to, to just start getting off of whatever substance they are, they are on, and then, and then they may go out and, and work into a, one of the turning points. So the, what we call them is too similar to get, and it's really easy to confuse them too. Yes? Trevor, anything else?
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add, I think there were a couple folks in that second round that spoke to, I can't remember now, was the Vermont Income Tax Assistance Program.
Yeah, that was-
For helping people to file tax forms. Wouldn't normally have to, but you obviously have to if you want to earn income tax credit refunds and, I'm not sure what the ask was on that, but I remember hearing that from a couple of folks.
I think it was 40,000.
It was 400,000.
I think it was 400,000.
So that, I picked up on that. I don't know much about the program.
Per cap.
No, I, I would second that. They, I, I have a constituent who's volunteered for that program for a number of years, and they don't always get the training and what they need for that. So anything we can do to help that, it's a very, very valuable service for especially seniors, so.
Right. I think RSVP is, helps with that.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're talking to the Iowa, but it's a separate funding stream.
The ask is 400,000, 80,000 per cap, and as we all know, there's five caps.
Kimberly, anything else?
I think everything has been said.
Yeah. The, the one thing that I found is that there was a real consistent theme throughout both public hearings and, and throughout all of the documents that have been sent to us. There was maybe, maybe 12 to 15 different real issues that have been pinpointed, and I don't know that I can ever, that I can say that I've had that feeling in past years. You know, it's, it's just very consistent, narrowly focused concepts, because it just seems to me from past years that it's been broader than that. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, I think that's probably, that's, that resonates with me, and that may be in part because we have federal fiscal stimulus and recovery dollars in a way that we haven't had in the past, and that's changed the landscape to a certain degree.
Yep.
And groups are organized.
And that.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. So, all right, very good. Anything else?
Just sent everybody a Digger article that I found about the Richard Kemp Center.
Oh, good.
About what? About what?
What is it?
Oh.
Did you, were you able to read it?
I saw it.
Send it.
Just a minute, just a minute. Let me see.
We're all in the address seats.
Yeah, sure. Um, darn it, it's sitting in my chair.
It won't.
Right. So, um, it's the state's first community center run by Black and Brown Vermonters for Black and Brown Vermonters. Based focused on wellness, cultural empowerment, and economic development. Um, it's once in Burlington, Black and Brown people are implementing policies, processes, programs, and initiatives for Black and Brown people in Burlington, as opposed to folks who are outside of that community, say, here's what you are. And it goes on from there, including focus on young people.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for looking that up.
That's pretty, the website, you can go to the website and you can find out more, but it seems to have Vermont Racial Justice Alliances across the top. I couldn't find the names of anybody who works there, who the board is, or there wasn't that kind of information yet. They're just getting started.
Okay. Well, very good. Well, thank you, everyone. This has been good. It's always, it's always good to listen to Vermonters and their needs and get folks' perspective, especially during the era of COVID, when it's difficult to have somebody walk in and talk to us as they have in the past. So thanks again to one and all, and we will be back at 1 o'clock promptly.